Go ahead and call this meeting to order at six thirty-three. We can move on to the first agenda item. Which is a roll call.
All right, Director Bajaj.
Present.
Director Chow is absent today. Director Race.
Present.
Director Sepe. I'm gonna have to actually put you at the beginning because we're doing alphabetical. And Director Wasowski.
Yes, in here.
Do this. There, I changed your name as well.
Thank you. To agenda item number two. Uh, which is public comment.
Hi. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, it's good to see you all take care and it's, uh. Gosh, it's almost. April, that's hard to believe. Uh, okay. Good to see you all.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, moving on to item number three or consent items. Is there a motion to pass all of our consent item?
I move to approve the consent items.
Sorry, I didn't catch the second. So we have a motion from Director Wasowski with a second from Director Bajaj. Uh, and you can go ahead and vote on.
All right, Director Hu-Je. Director Bajaj.
Yes.
Director Racy.
Yes.
Director Wasowski.
Yes.
Have passed our consent items. We can go ahead to item number four A. Kevin, if you want to take it away.
Oh, sure. Actually, we have our district auditor here to present, so I'll go ahead and stop share. Um, so we have Craig and Mike from Vectren Company who can take over.
Hey, guys. Thanks for having us. We really appreciate it. So, uh, before I get too much into the presentation, it's gonna, I'm gonna go and share my screen. Hopefully, share the right one. Do you guys see kind of the, uh, the, uh, PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you see this, just the one slide?
I think we're seeing the whole side pane and, and.
Okay, well, that's, that's just, that's just as well, because I, I don't. It's showing up. I have like four monitors here. We're showing up on some of the different monitors, but, um. So, you know, again, thanks for having us to, you know, that, that, uh, this year to do the audit. This is our, I think this was our fourth year. Definitely interesting audit year. Obviously, there were some budgetary changes and differences with the district during the year that adversely impacted you guys a bit. So we'll briefly cover that and we will hopefully address your questions, so. As I get started, um. And I'm not sure if you guys have the auto report itself in front of you. So what I'm doing, I'm looking at separate screens, looking at the PowerPoint that I have, the draft audit that was sent to the district, uh, late last week. In, in, in front of me. So basically. You know, like the primary objective of financial statement audit is to verify fair presentation of your financials. So. You know, we, we'll talk a bit later about what, you know, what the audit does, what it doesn't do, what the objectives are, what the objectives are not. I think most of the time when you see the word audit in. A news article or online or whatever, it's always associated with something that's, that definitely has gone wrong. Uh, that is not the primary objective of a financial statement audits. The objective of a financial statement audit is to, uh, render an opinion about the fair presentation of the financial statement. So. You as board members and the public can look at those numbers and rely on those figures to make your financial decisions, right? And ultimately, that's probably one of the biggest things you want to get out of the audit. You want to know. Are those numbers that I get month by month? And at the end of the year, are they, are they accurately presented? And can I rely on those figures? Uh, you know, as I make my financial decisions during the year. So overall, the opinion on the financial statements, which you'll find on page two is, is a clean opinion. So. Again, we have the option of giving, um, of, of variety of opinions and. Due to our audit testing, we are, are giving the district a passing grade on the financial statements. So. Again, that just means that we believe that does not mean I've evaluated everything, does not mean we've looked at every transaction. It just means that we believe the attached financial statements are fairly presented. In accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, and I'm gonna go ahead and kind of skip down a bit, um. You know, I'm gonna, I might just shift this slide up a bit. So, you know. And the question is, you know, what do we do and what do we not do, you know, during the audit? And sometimes I like to explain what audit is by telling what audit is not. So. You know, we don't look at every transaction, right? That would be nearly impossible. We'd have to have several staff members onsite at the district every day for the entire year. To test every transaction, right? Which is just not economically or pragmatically feasible. The audit is also not geared to provide a comprehensive evaluation of your internal controls, right? So we can't tell you exactly, here are your areas of weaknesses. That's not the primary purpose of the audit. Uh, the audit is not a comprehensive fraud examination. So we're not. You know, we, you know, the audit is not telling us like. You know, here's fraud at the district. That's just not what we do. So, we plan and perform the audit with the objective of verification of accurate financial statement presentation. So. Are the numbers attached to the audit, are they accurately presented? And again, that's kind of like your foundation or your base for your financial decision making for the following year and really kind of an objective analysis about. Can you rely on those figures during the course of the year to make your decisions? So. And I, and I say that, and I feel pretty strongly about that, just because, um. You know, if, if we have significant adjustments at the end of the year, or if we find the cash accounts are reconciled, or. If we find other internal inconsistencies, that point, as a board member, you say. Can I truly rely on these numbers when I'm making, again, budgetary choices during the year? So, just an example of like some of the stuff that we do. I'm gonna pull up on the auto report and scroll down to page. I think it's page fif- fifteen or seventeen. And this is your, these are your fund financial statements. Yeah, page fifteen. Um, now, these are your fund financial statements. And so part of what we do is we. Uh, analyze them analytically. We just say, are there any differences year over year? That causes, you know, cause concern, you know, and then we help design audit procedures to, to address some of those concerns. So, if you look at your year-over-year financial statements, there's really two big things that stick out, right?
Uh, I'm really sorry to interrupt. Do you mind making the font a little bit bigger, please?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So again, this is page fifteen of the audit. And so again, I'm just kind of showing you what we do as we plan. So you look here and you say, okay, well, our service charge has dropped by, you know, over half compared to the prior year. So, what we as auditors do and what you as board members should be doing month by month is you more or less look at the narratives presented to you by management and what you know about the conditions of the business. Or the entity, and you match up your financial expectations against the, the events that are happening. So if we showed up. And then Kevin and the staff and everyone said, oh, we had a great year and. You know, we had so much more traffic at the pool and wow, it was just amazing how, how well just the, the year went. And then, if that's the story I got from everybody and I see that our service charge has dropped by one half. From an audit perspective, I say, we have a problem because the narrative doesn't match the numbers. You know, the, the numbers or the numbers don't support the narrative. Why? And why is that, right? So, obviously, two thousand twenty-one was very different. And all the revenue you earned in the summer of two thousand twenty was not, or two thousand nineteen was not earned in the summer of two thousand twenty, right? So obviously, our expectation going in was that your service charge revenue would drop. Just because no one went to the pool, you know, for several months. The other side here, I'll, I'll let Kevin speak to this, is professional fees went up from the prior year from twenty-one thousand, eighty-one thousand. So. You know, as an auditor, we say, you know, why is that the case? So Kevin, you want to briefly address that?
Yeah, certainly. Uh, a big, big, big portion of that was professional fees associated with our strategic plan that we did, uh, and during that time. The other portion of it was increased legal fees, which are due to, um, uh. A number of factors, but part of it is professionalization. We're trying to do a lot more, um, when we're looking at our policies, overhauling them. As well as redoing our bylaws and, um, having most of our contracts checked. So it's probably an increase. That's good. We're gonna see going forward.
Okay. So again, as auditors, this is, these are the things we kind of look at. We'll schedule out numbers or number of years. We'll design procedures to kind of verify accuracy of the numbers and then perform. And more, and then set up our tests based off, ba- based off of the numbers that we see. Now, again, these are, again, from a, and I, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself. As, as board members, you want to ask the same questions, right? Like you want to look at your numbers and say. Month to month, year to year and say, well, why did our service revenue, like Kevin's telling us, the traffic at the pool. Is up by thirty percent. Why is it that our revenues dropped by fifty percent? Like you want to be able to. Critically analyze your numbers and ask the same types of questions on a month-to-month basis. Uh, in essence, hold management accountable for, um, you know, for the financial results. Like, why is this happening? And again, holding them accountable doesn't mean you're, you're yelling or you're, you know, or, or getting aggressive or whatever. You just want to know. You know, or understand why the numbers or what, 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 what the numbers tell you about what's happening at the district. So, again, that's a little bit about what an audit is and what an audit is not. We don't look at everything. We can't. We analytically examine the district's operations from a financial standpoint, and then that helps design our procedures that we perform. So again, overall, we issued an unqualified opinion, a clean opinion. Um, and as a reminder, uh, it's always, uh, management's responsible for selection. Of the county policies and procedures. That's not up to the auditor, the audit firm. So these numbers, these financial statements do belong to you. Uh, they belong to the board and the management to present to the public and to other stakeholders at the district. Other required communications, we really had no major difficulties. Um. I feel like, uh, remote auditing can be a bit challenging just because we're not on site. And so staff may not have been quite as responsive as we would have liked, just because we weren't there. You know, well, going forward, we, it is likely, we, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll address this with Kevin, too. It's likely we'll spend like one day onsite and then audit from our office another day or two. So kind of like a permanent hybrid type arrangement. It's a bit less disruptive for. You know, for staff, for us not to be there for, you know, two or three full days, but, um, overall, really nothing to report to the board. So. We did book a couple of journal entries. You know, again, uh. I would say nothing that was that, that big of a deal that would cause me to question whether or not the numbers were inaccurate as, uh, on a, on a month-to-month basis I presented to the board. So some of the highlights, um. Your net position on the statement of the assets showed. Positive net assets of two point two million, or that's my, if I were to borrow from private accounting, I would say that's my retained earnings or the excess of my. Assets over my liabilities. I'm gonna go ahead and open up, uh, the financial statements a bit, so you can see those. So, you know, what, what we report here is. Total assets of two point four six eight million. Total liabilities of two hundred and sixteen thousand. And again, essentially, no long-term debt, right? So the district is very well positioned in that sense. Uh, for a net position end of the year of two point two million. The next thing we'll look at is a statement of activities. This is a, oh, sorry. This is most like a for-profit income statement. And it shows a net loss on the year of sixty-three thousand dollars. Now. Again, we did briefly, we did briefly address this, right? Uh, again, it was kind of a unique year for two reasons. Uh, you know, one, your service charge revenue dramatically dropped. And again, as auditors, we say, does that fit with the story of the year, right? Is that? In accordance with our expectations? And I would say, yes, we would expect the tenancies to be way down. Because presumably, the, the pool was closed for much of the summer of twenty. Yeah. And again, we had those increases of professional services, which that's, that's more money out. So that. Overall, that's the, those are the primary drivers of the net loss for the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year. So, I'm gonna talk about the footnotes briefly. Uh, the footnotes are a summary of the accounting policies that are approved by the board. I say that tongue-in-cheek. Uh, a lot of small districts don't necessarily have super formalized accounting, um. Policies, I say accounting policies, you have things like, who signs the checks? Credit card policy, stuff like that. These are more like gap accounting policies. And I, I think of all of our. Small to mid-sized districts, man, I might have one or two that has an official accounting policy manual. So. Um, you know, I mean, to you guys, you have, uh, endorsed all the footnotes in the financial statements, right? So you take full responsibility for all of those. That's, and they're your financial statements, right? So, um, again, I'm kind of, I'm kind of joking with that, but. Uh, I think that there was really nothing extraordinary to point out in the footnotes to the financial statements. And again, I'll be just kind of taking you then, taking you here. And they start on page seventeen. And again, just gives a greater sense of some of the amounts about more information about the amounts in the financial statements themselves. Uh, now, I have talked a lot. Any, uh, any questions so far?
Yeah, I, I noticed that the management discussion and analysis, uh, isn't part of this draft. Is that unusual?
Uh, uh, yeah, because the draft I have here. Does have the M D N A. So, yeah, I do, I do, uh, I do have the M D N A here. So I'm unsure why the M D N A would not have been included in that.
Oh.
Yeah, a little bit weird.
No, I've seen that. So I've got that, too. It's just, um, when I went through the, um. Cable contents, it, it showed pages three through nine were the M D A. And I go, oh, there's no three through nine, but pages you just showed me, I've seen.
Yeah. So again, we do not, uh. You know, take the, take, take management's stuff at face value. We don't just take the numbers and present them as audited. That's not the way it works. We do outside confirmations, we have payroll, we look at, you know, cash receipts, you know, so on and so forth. To verify accuracy of the numbers as presented, you know, to us. So. Any questions for us? So we'll add one thing. There are no questions. And Kevin and I had talked about this last year. We do offer, uh, kind of short workshops on internal controls over small to mid-sized agencies. So, when I say workshop, where the presentations can be as long as three hours. And, or they could be as short as sixty to ninety minutes. You know, again, what we do is we talk about controls of local agencies. We talk about best practices. Uh, we share a few war stories about, um, things that have happened negatively at, at small agencies. So. I think Kevin and I talked about it probably, I think, fifteen, sixteen months ago. And the thought was, we get, we were having some new board members and we wait until they came on board. So that offer is still on the table. Um. I don't, we don't charge for it. It's just kind of a service to our clients. So. I could do that in person, or we could, we could do it over Zoom. It just kind of would depend on what your guys feel, or if that's of interest to the board. Um, that, that service is available. And again, it's, it's, it's free of charge to our clients.
Do you mind telling us what exactly you go over in there?
Yeah, sure thing. So, basically, what we would do is. Kind of parse it out between like appropriate controls over cash. Appropriate controls over bank reconciliations. Appropriate controls over payroll, you know, payroll expense. Appropriate controls over credit cards. Uh, appropriate controls over, um. You know, budgetary, you know, and operating controls, like just budget prep and. The things that you want to ask about if you're a board member. So just kind of some, uh, we touch on some of the major areas of small to mid-sized agency might face. And discuss what best practices in the industry might be. So. And again, that, that service is available to the, the board free of charge.
I'm always happy to learn something new, so.
So if that's of interest, Kevin, I would say, I would probably need to, it's gonna be after tax season, obviously. I'm, I'm busy, but right now. So anytime between. End of April and mid, mid-August. And I could get, come down for the night, or like, we could do it via Zoom. More or less, whatever the board would, you know, would please. And I would estimate it to be anywhere between sixty to ninety minutes. Um, we, we do have a longer presentation we've done for other agencies. Uh, I tend to think that they get a little bit bored after a couple hours. So. I have cut it, cut it down. Just, I mean, imagine that, you know. Board of a CPA talking for three hours straight. Um. But, uh, again, it's sixteen to sixty to hundred and twenty minutes or so, and it's up to the board. About timing and everything else. And if there are specific topics of interest, we can, we can certainly focus more on those, too. So.
Thank you.
Kevin, just let me know what the board might decide and we can get it set up.
Will do.
So any other questions? Okay, so we would anticipate releasing the report relatively soon, and we appreciate the fact that you guys took the time to listen to us tonight. And, uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact Mike or myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
You too. Thanks.
So do we need to move to approve the audit?
Uh, yes.
Well, I'll move to approve the audit now that I understand the M D A's in there that I couldn't find before.
I'll take it. Uh, so we have a motion from Director Rosalowski and a second from Director Ahuja. Um, all those in, or we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Kevin, if you wanna.
Sure, uh, Director Ahuja.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Director Bajaj.
Yes.
Uh, Director Racy.
Yes.
Director Wasowski.
Yes.
And Director Chow is absent.
Awesome. So we've approved the independent audit report. We'll be moving on to item four B. Uh, which is the outreach plan update, um, with the marketing budget increase.
All right, I feel like I'm going crazy. Oh, here it is. All right, um. Anyone seeing a loading screen? Here we go. Great. Okay, so, um, let's go through the outreach plan update. Um, so let's go through the background first. Uh, last month, just as a, uh, quick refresher, we presented a initial outreach plan. And then, uh, took feedback, took that feedback, and then this is the presentation, um, about the feedback and what can be done about it. So, um, what I wanted to show first is a generalized sales funnel. And for the outreach plan, uh, you know, what we're using is traditional outreach, uh, with mailers and emailers. And that's the top of the funnel. And what we're doing is we're looking for brand awareness, uh, and people to just basically know about us. Uh, if we're successful at that, then people are gonna go to the website, which is the middle funnel. And that's where we're hoping to convert, um, people who look at our stuff to, um, to users. Um, and, but what we do there is we're trying to get people to either sign up for email lists. Um, there's not too much you can purchase right now, just because you can't pay. But you can register for some things. Um, and I think our outreach plan, the initial one, we were really working on just doing, uh, contact enhancements. Because sometimes people would have a question about what they see online, and they would call in, and then they just never get a response back, or it just takes too long. And by then, they've already gone to some other place. Um, so our objective, uh, for the outreach plan was to make better, um. Uh, move over to the Zoom phone, so that we would have quicker response times, especially with the phones. And then also, um, better, uh, domain. So that's easier to spell, get to the website, and so on and so forth. The very bottom part of our sales funnel. Um, is very similar to the middle. Um, but that's where we're trying to get those leads to become customers. Um, and actually make that purchase or purchase again. Uh, and that is mostly going to be through the e-commerce we're adding later on this year. That would be when you can actually register and purchase online. Um, and this would also include our, our upcoming resident page. So that was kind of our initial plan. Uh, and we took some feedback. The feedback was generally positive. Uh, the second, uh, resident event was a little bit weak, fair enough. Yeah, but the biggest piece there is that the exposure, uh, was not sufficient. Mailers. Just aren't effective in reaching as many people as we wanted to reach. You know, we've been sending mailers for seven years. Uh, between one and four mailers per year, and our residents don't know about us. So if we continue doing that, then we can expect similar results. Agreed. Now. With this strategy, this was, uh, a strategy, strategy that was put together based on a seven thousand dollar budget. Um, so, some of the things that we're gonna need to address if we want to have a, um. A more robust. Uh, exposure methods is that we're going to have to expand the marketing budget. Um, and we will have to real allocate staff time, uh, and of course, pay for that additional marketing channel. Now. What I've done is I went and talked to a bunch of different marketing agencies to find out. A, how much does this cost? Um, what kind of marketing is available? What should, can, and should we be doing? And some of the feedback that I got was that really before doing that top funnel, it's probably better to really have a solid middle and lower funnel. And what they recommended, uh, multiple agencies, not all of them, but what they recommended was to update the website. Um, to have better, uh, S E O, which is search engine optimization. Uh, make sure we have really solid email, uh, channels, so that people can enter the email to get more information, or if they call in, we can capture that information. Uh, put it into a C R M, which is a, a customer relationship manager. Make sure we have our e-commerce, uh, completely set up and ready to go. And of course, have our program capacity increase, so that we can accept new, uh, potential users. Without doing those things first, we would be spending a lot of money to get people to come to a website that's not as effective as it could be. Uh, and they can't pay for anything right there. And so, you know, a lot of times people say, okay, well, I'll just figure this out later, and they never do. So, um, the recommendation was fix these bottom two things, then do the top thing, uh, later on. So what kind, what would this look like? How, how would this play out if we were to put a plan together? Um, and this, of, of course, is on top of the previous plan. Uh, this is not a replacement for it. The first thing that we would want to do is to strengthen the foundation, um, of that sort of middle and bottle funnel. Uh, we would want to contract with a marketing agency, because, uh, you know, doing the cost analysis on how much it would cost for this, us to do it ourselves, it just didn't. It didn't work out very well. Um, some of the challenges that we have. Uh, as a small agency with a rotating staff, is that we just don't have the people to do it. The, the one who's doing it right now, Olivia, she's fantastic. She's also doing school and working other jobs, too. And so, you know, there's. There's not really a great way to have someone consistently be able to put in the amount of, um, of energy that, that we would need to, to do this. And we would also be developing skills that are really in demand and somewhat technical.
On that note, uh, Kevin, I'd just like to say, going with the marketing agency actually makes more sense, because. Marketing agencies, that's their primary job. So they keep in touch with what is fresh in the market. And you end up losing less money instead of wasting money on platforms that are not popular anymore.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. And, and that is totally correct. Um, and it's so much more cost-effective. They just do things faster and quicker than we can. So this means that there's gonna be an, an expense item that's really visible on our, uh, P and L, uh, on that, that sheet. Normally, when we do it, it kind of gets rolled into our personnel expenses, and you don't actually see the increase, even though it's there. Um, this one would be a, a visible increase, but it's, you know. You know, just going by what, uh, Neuper was saying, you know, it is actually cheaper, uh, even if it doesn't look like it. And they do a better job. So what we need to do is.
Way, and way more effective.
Way more effective. I completely agree. It's, it's highly technical and it's things that, you know, I, I've did a little bit of, and it just took me ten times as long. Uh, and it wasn't as good. So, uh, the first thing is search engine optimization, making sure that when people look up, uh, swimming or pools, or whatever it is they're looking for, that they get to our website first. Or at least in the top ten. The second thing is, uh, C M S management. Uh, so this is a content management system. Right now, we use WordPress for that. And that's okay. And it's, it's okay. But the problem is, there's always these updates. We're relying on a theme. And they're pushing out updates all the time. And if you update it and there's an error. The whole thing can come down, and we have absolutely no clue how to fix that. The whole thing can come down and we have absolutely no clue how to fix that. So we need help with that. And none of us are, are technical enough to know how to do that. Not that it's terribly difficult, but it is beyond us. It's just not our bread and butter. Um, we can improve our user interface a little bit. Uh, there's more up to date designs. And of course, uh, design improvements. We can use analytics to improve what, uh, information is on the site and where it's located. I did this a little bit years ago. Um, by using. I would take the results of what people are actually looking for, what they're clicking on, and then I made that the top, uh, priority. So on our website, you'll find public swim and swim lessons. They have their own tabs. And that's because those are the two things that people generally look for. So that's the kind of things that, um, they would do, but just better than I could do it. And, um, and of course embedding email nets all over our website so that we can integrate. It into our, um, customer relationship manager system, once that becomes available. And, um, but it's more than just capturing emails. I think capturing emails is just really the base layer. What we really need to do is capture the emails and then segregate them into different groups, right? Because we don't want someone who's interested in lap swimming, getting the same emails as someone who wants to come for swim lessons. They're just different. Um, so we need a way of managing that, uh, which comes with a CRM. So the second thing, of course, is the e-commerce. Um, that would be whichever system the board decides that we implement this, uh, winter. That should come with some, uh, CRM capabilities so that we can have, uh, you know, a profile. The email or and or phone list. Uh, some of them are even capable of doing text. So that way, when, you know, it's time to sign up for classes, we can send out a blast to people who might be interested. And we can also take people off who maybe aren't interested anymore. So that's phase one. Any questions so far on that? All right. Step two is prepare for paid marketing. So we're still not ready for paid marketing. Um, the next thing we need to do is again, contract with a marketing agency or freelancer to get professional marketing, uh, videos and maybe a few photos. Uh, this would be one or two, um, maybe twenty, thirty second clips that would give a good idea of what Rancho is about. Uh, particularly swim lessons. These are trust indicators. When a parent comes to a website, um, they're really looking for a few things. Affordable, clean, safe, fun. Uh, and we can do that very quickly and easily with a slick video. Um, the nice thing about these types of things is we don't need to do it often, right? You do one video or two videos, and then you just, you can use the same one for five, six years. It's totally fine. So it's not something that needs to be done all the time. Um, the second thing is a reputation management campaign. Getting good reviews and keeping good reviews can be difficult because people are not as motivated to say how wonderful a time they are, have had. As when things go wrong. When things go wrong, they love to go online and yell and say terrible things about you. So. A reputation management campaign, uh, would basically be to clean up those, uh, third party websites. So, you know, as, as an administrator, you can go in. You can, uh, change the way it looks, the layout, you can add photos. And, uh, but the most important thing is actually to ask for reviews from people who like our services. And this is really awkward. It's absolutely not a fun thing to do. And so to make that happen, you actually have to have a person. Who is continually pushing our own staff, and they're not gonna like it, to continually ask people to do it. Um, so it's a bit of a, you know, it takes some effort, but it's worth the effort, uh, after a while of getting those, those reviews in. Uh, and finally, of course, is increasing program capacity through a recruitment drive, um, which by the way, has not been going well. Uh, this year, our recruitment has been, uh, pretty low for some reason. So that's, uh, we'll see. Uh, there must be a lot of, uh, different opportunities recently. In any case, these things will, uh, prepare us to actually accept. Uh, customers and, uh, users. As soon as they come to our website, they'll see a nice video. They'll go to Yelp. It's gonna have nice reviews. Great. And then, of course, there's programs that are available for them. Best possible scenario. Any questions on this slide?
Um, yeah, just a quick question. So what exactly would the marketing video be used for? Like, would there be added expenses of like. Paying for that video to be sponsored on different platforms, or is it just to kind of like have on our website?
Generally, you could do both, but I think for us, probably the first one, just having it on our website, right? So that when people come in, there's a nice pleasant video playing that they're like, oh, that looks wonderful. I would like to go there. Um, but we can use it for paid campaigns.
It seems like we've already got a, a lot of photographs that that could be made out of as a slideshow, although that's not a video I, I, I understand. You know, because we've got, uh, you know, in, in the books and, and it just over the last few years, we, we've had a lot of pictures taken. So I'm wondering also. I'm wondering if we're putting, you know, in step one and step two, the cart before the horse, since I don't think with the next item, uh, with the, uh. With the grants and the time it's gonna involve doing that, that there's gonna be much time left over, money left over to do this. That's, that's my concern.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Um, yes, we can use some of the old photos. Uh, generally, we do want to keep it fresh. Uh, the other issue is some of the photos, different resolutions, different lighting, things like that. So, you know, it, in any case. Do we need a marketing video? No, we don't need a marketing video, but it's kind of part of the package. So it, it, it can definitely be taken out. Certainly not a problem. However, it's just one of those things that adds to the kind of a veneer of trust and. It's one of the things that helps people who are visiting for the first time say, yes, this is a reputable business that I want to go to.
But you have to be, be there when they go there. And I'm having a feeling that with the, uh, uh, projects that are gonna be taking place over our slack time. That a lot of times they're going, oh, I'm gonna go there. No, actually, the deck's being worked on or something like that, you know? So, um, I hate to be a naysayer, but that's, that's my concern.
Certainly. And these steps don't need to be taken in the same year. That's why I separated them into steps. These can be separated, started at different times. Um, but I think that there's certain things that should be done sort of in the same timeframe. Um, and so step two is mostly for the summer, right? Because any videos that are taken have to happen in the summer. Any reputation management, AKA asking for reviews, needs to happen in the summer. So, but this doesn't need to be this summer. It could be next summer. It could be two years from now. It could be even three years from now, right? So it's something that can be done. At a different time.
But you've also pointed out that, uh, once you start going down this route of, of trying to, um, uh, do a better job of representing ourselves to the outside community. You need somebody, uh, pushing on it a lot of the time, you know, uh, a consistent person. Uh, trying to get people through Yelp and Google to do, uh, um, reputation stuff, you know, referrals. So.
Right. There, there's some other ways we can do it too. They're a little bit, um. So for example, uh, one thing that I think Director Ahuja mentioned was that we can even do things like, uh. You know, if you leave us a review, then we'll give you a free snack. So it's a bit silly, but it, it works. Um, and you know, for the reputation, it's not like it needs to be super ongoing. We just need to get that. Um, that star rating as high as we can. And then we can, you know, pull off the gas pedal a little bit. It's not year round or anything like that. So, um, and again, this is something that we don't have to do this summer, can be pushed to different summers. Uh, the third step of the, of the campaign could be, again, uh, that's when, once we have our website ready, once we're, we've got our marketing and our reputation, they look great. And we have capacity to accept new users, uh, paid marketing at that point makes a lot of sense. Um, and this could be pay per click. It could be social media, whether that's, uh, boosted or paid social media or free and organic social media either way. Um, and then also, um, having those email campaigns and, and marketing and remarketing. Um, this would be things where you've captured those emails, you've segregated into different, um, groups. And, uh, once you're ready, then you can start sending out emails to those different groups with either offers or information that they may be interested in. So, um, I kind of lumped it all together. Uh, we could start the email campaign earlier, but I figured, um, it's kind of, uh, it might be best to have a, um. Someone who knows how to do this a little bit, um, to help us out with, with this portion.
So, uh, so Kevin, a lot, you know, even before we go into Google Ads and other paid stuff, if we just get the SEO fixed. That itself, because, um, the search engines will pick it up faster in any case. There's something, this, this, I think we should primarily focus on getting the SEO fixed as soon as possible. Because that will get a lot of visibility and traffic on the website in any case, before we need to do anything else.
Absolutely. I, you're way ahead of me. It's in my next slide, or a couple of slides.
Sorry.
No worries. So let's take a look at, um, what the budgetary costs would be. Now, keep in mind, uh, some of these are ongoing. Some of these are one-time costs. And, um, things can be pushed out over time. There's many different ways of doing this. So it doesn't all have to be on one year necessarily. Uh, and it includes both upfront costs and also staff costs as well. So also a caveat, um, I got a bunch of different quotes for a whole bunch of different things to get an idea of what the costs might be. These are ranges and everything can be cut down, right? So if, if there's only portions, or you want to do a little bit one year and a little bit another year, it can be split up. So, uh, but just to give you an idea. So upfront costs are in the ballpark range of about eight thousand to twenty thousand, depending on what we want to do. If we were to do the, you know. Um, everything that I talked about, including this would be building an entirely new website. There's cheaper ways of doing it. We could, for example. Anyway, uh, this would also include getting videos, things like that. So if, say, videos aren't part of it, maybe that might cut down a couple thousand off of it. Um, but this is kind of the range. I think twenty thousand is a little bit high. And I think it somewhere in the middle is a little bit more reasonable for many of those things. Again, that's mostly step one and two. Um, ongoing marketing costs, a lot of these are mostly going to be if we decide to do step three. That's the paid marketing. So generally, the five to six thousand dollar range is going to be just social media posts plus website. Um, maintenance, that would be the CMS, taking care of that content management system, maybe web hosting and a few other things too. Um, but the bulk of that cost will be in that social media content management. That would be creating posts, making posts and engaging with people. Without any paid advertisement, that would be what six thousand buys. Once you start going up, now you start getting into paid advertisements, Google listings and some other, um, neat tricks that can be done. Twenty thousand, eh, anyway, it goes way, way up, but I mean, but we just, that's just unreasonable. So. I completely agree that this is, uh. Potentially, you know, a lot more than, than we would want to do at this point. And of course, the staff costs are likely that this will create a one-year delay in a major project. I don't know which one. Uh, and I, and actually, at, at the time I wrote this, I said site master plan, but it turns out that that is not the project that will need to get pushed. So we'll discuss that in the next, uh, agenda item. Uh, is there any, uh, questions about this?
Yeah, I think you've identified the fact that in some way we're doing these guys in inverse order of what makes sense. I have a feeling that the, uh, project, uh, matrix that you're gonna be involved in, uh, for the, uh, uh. All, all the projects that need to be done is gonna take you, uh, is gonna leave you no time to do any of this. That's my fear is that you're only one person, you know? And, and you're the only resource, full-time resource we have, full-time year-round resource we have to throw at this. You know? So I see why having somebody else do the marketing, um, makes sense because. But it still needs to be supervised. And, and so what my concern is trying not to split you into. Split your efforts into too many directions at once, so that, um, at the same time, if we're to survive, um. I assume that, uh, Jay and, and Sonny are, are running the, uh, district pool. You know, what, what we're offering currently, you know? And, uh, um, and then you also identified in your, um, um. Manage, in your, uh, manager's report that, um, staffing, even for what we're used to offering. Without getting more, uh, customers is, uh, maybe challenging this year. You know, you're having trouble finding, uh, staff. Just to keep us running on, at the level we are now. So I, I think that's part of why I'm a little leery about advertising. I mean, I, I hate being the bummer in, in the room, but, but, uh, uh, too much more advertising getting, but maybe we also need that, and I'm wrong. And we need that to attract more people so that we can, um. Have people, uh, paying customers that we can hire people to work for. You know, it's like, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? I think it's, it's what I'm trying to say in a, you know, really lame way, you know? So I'm just.
Sorry. Uh, so what I wanted to kind of mention was we don't have to advertise only swim lessons. We can also just focus on maybe just the rentals for now. Because that is not gonna increase too much of, that's not, from what I understand, is not gonna involve too much of Kevin's time individually. Where we can get way more review, uh, revenue just by the rentals. So we focus on one thing, see how that works. If it increases revenue and go from there.
What kind of rentals are you talking about? Pool rentals?
Um, well, pool, pool rentals are, are possible. Any of the rentals would be fine. Um, but I, I do want to mention that one of the objectives of the outreach plan, uh, is not expected to create a return, which is just to let residents know we exist, whether or not they come. So on some level, um, the ROI is not expected to be positive anyway for that portion of it. But, you know, the search and some of the other things will bring more visibility to the district. Um, regardless of whether there's paid advertisement or not. And the paid advertisement can come later. We don't have to do it now. So. In any case, here's a quick recap. Outreach is the number one priority that was set last year. Uh, the initial plan was using our current budget of $7,000. The exposure methods that it presented are inadequate. Totally agree. Uh, contracting with marketing agencies is the most effective method of exposure. Um, however, middle funnel improvements are recommended prior to doing any paid marketing, if indeed that is the plan. And of course, any of this is going to require a budget increase and a tolerance for project delays, which I think the project delays. Might be a bigger obstacle at this point, uh, given what we know about the grants, which is a different agenda item. So the options for consideration. Um, are to go with the initial plan minus the second outreach event. Which will essentially increase costs by $2,000. Plan B is just to do steps one and two with an initial cost of eight to $20,000 and an ongoing cost of one to $5,000. Again, this depends on which vendor is selected. And this can be broken up into several years, so it doesn't have to be the same year. Option C is just to upgrade the top of the funnel, meaning paid advertisements. There's a very minimal one-time cost, but then there's a significant ongoing cost for as long as you run the campaign for. Uh, option D is all of the above. That is the most expensive plan. And of course, staff recommends, uh, selecting options A and B, meaning, um, stick with the original plan minus the second outreach plan. Uh, second outreach event. And, uh, redo our website, clean up our SEO, get some CMS management. Use analytics to redo, go to look and feel of it, improve the UI, um, for, for users. And get those email lists going. Uh, so this is what we expect. Um, this is just the dollars. It doesn't include the staff time, which will also be significant.
Sorry, just a quick question. Um, what is, can you clarify what the second outreach event is? Is that different from step two?
Yes, yes. Um, so that was from our first outreach, um, presentation. That would be the Halloween event that we were planning to showcase our facility. So that one, the objective was to showcase what, say, the hall could look like if it was decorated so that people may be more inclined to, um, rent it. Um, now, keep in mind, rentals are not a significant source of revenue, especially because they are just usually one-offs. The types of rentals that are significant sources of rentals are when we have a relationship with a recurring, um, customer. So for example. Yoga, scuba, because they come more often. Um, so, and they, they need less supervision. So that, that's the type of thing that we would really, really be interested in is, um. Uh, you know, or an after-school program. you know, or an after school program if they wanted to come in. That's the type of program that brings inconsistent and large sources of revenue without a whole lot of input from staff.
So then how are A and B like related? So if we were to just select option B, then would that second outreach event still occur or not? Like, are they mutually exclusive?
I think A and B are kind of married. We wouldn't want to not do what we're already doing. We wouldn't want to stop doing mailers. I mean, we wouldn't necessarily want to not do our Memorial Day event, just because that's a great kickoff to summer. People get to see the facility and take a swim. It's, you know, it's probably good to keep that one. Our emailers to the Cupertino Union School District families, that one's also pretty effective. So we would want to continue doing many of the things in our initial plan. So we we could stick with A, we could then do B a different year, or we could do A and B. There's many different ways of doing it, but it will create a bigger effect on the budget. And I wanted to know that ahead of time before kind of negotiating that with different agencies.
I can see that A and B go together and as you've as you've said, and and I guess what you were trying to agree upon here is is that with COVID, a lot of people don't know we still exist is basically the problem. And you're trying to reach out and say, hey, we're still here. Come, come swim, come, you know, use our facilities, you know, we're not dead. We didn't die. You know, and I guess we do need to reach out and say that because it's not apparent. We're still getting people in the in the neighborhood and say, I didn't know you were here. You know, so I see why you want to up upgrade that and maybe we just have to. You know, it's a gamble from my point of view, but you know, steady state is is very low utilization and that's a problem.
Right. And I think also one thing to consider is that personally, just as as doing budgets and working on this for years and years, I'm not afraid of upfront costs. I'm very afraid of ongoing costs. Yeah, so that's the the things that kind of scare me and keep me up at night is rising ongoing costs. And those are the things I try to keep low. So you know, that's why step C is something that we should consider once we're ready for it and then and and maybe it is necessary, but I think that if it is, we should be prepared on all other levels first. So what would be helpful is to know a rough range that I should expect annually so that I can start to budget in how that's going to look since I'm going, I am working on the budget right now for this coming fiscal year. So I'll need to build it in.
Sorry, just another quick question. So in terms of delaying other projects, I think you kind of hinted to it, but I'm assuming this would delay the grant application or would it be delaying something else?
So the grant application is probably the number one, 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 like the top priority, absolutely. Which puts a whole wrinkle on this. So not to skip ahead, but let me just give a quick summary here. There's a hundred and seventy something thousand dollars of grant money that Rancho can access for improvements on the facility. And we I'm in the middle of applying for it right now, and I think that we stand an excellent chance of getting it if we move quickly. That's why we have a resolution on the table. The the site master plan was meant to take a look at our facility as a whole and look at what we need to replace, but also not just now, but what we want the facility to look like in say ten, twenty years so that we can do our upgrades in a smart way that kind of look to the future. So if we're going to use the grant money, then which we need to, then it would be best to finish the site master plan first, which means we have to put the site master plan as a first priority, applying for the grant and then doing those actual activities of upgrading either this winter or next winter. So my original plan was to start this outreach project right now. But it kind of seems like actually I need to drop this and then start on the site master plan. Get that going so that it finishes by this middle of summer. We can start looking for contractors to get these projects rolling for the winter. And what we would be probably looking at is resurfacing our pool deck because the pool deck's a little bit rough. We would be looking at redoing our bathrooms. Those I believe were first built in nineteen ninety one. So they are in the end, there's our bathroom stalls. Some of them are starting to rust out at the bottom. The showers behind it, the tile, many of the cartridges are starting to seize up. So those can, there's just a lot of small maintenance items. And I think in general, it just needs a refreshment, you know, just to make it a little bit more modern. Potentially, if possible, build in a like a family room or make the shower so that they're more individual. Because I think people kind of expect that a little bit more these days, individual showers instead of the shared shower stalls. And depending, we have to put a twenty percent match down, which is no problem. But this means that there's opportunity to maybe do more than just the bathrooms. You know, there could be money in there to upgrade lighting, maybe. And Steve says no, but maybe, you know, and I think that what we should do is aim to use up all the grant money and really make the bathrooms and pool deck excellent. And if there's extra money, there's a ton of different things I can think of that we could upgrade. So
The biggest problem is that if we don't jump on it fast and and he devotes most of his time to this thing going, the money will vanish.
Yep.
And for forty four thousand dollars and three hundred forty four thousand, three hundred ninety eight dollars, we get a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars added to that. And we just have to jump on it and it has to and the project itself has to be done by June of
Twenty four.
That's why I'm saying I don't want, didn't want to divide them into too many places is you know.
Yeah.
And 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 it's been allocated for us.
Right. So the the projects on the table are site master plan. Then there would be making the construction projects, which includes public bidding processes with an S. Then there's the grant management, getting the money back, you know, applying for the, you know, to get the actual money. Once you've done the projects, things like that. Then we're also going to be installing that new software this winter. Potentially rolling out the outreach project. It's kind of a lot and it does make me a little bit worried that that might be a little bit more than I can chew. So
So just to clarify, this, like, if we were to pass this, it wouldn't be delaying other projects. If anything, this itself would be delayed until after after other projects are completed.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
I think what I what I need to know is just how much money should I allocate to the budget so that I can put it in so that when I do it, the money's there. So if there's no desire to go for plan B, then you would say plan A and then I'll keep the budget as is, right? If there's some desire for plan B, but some people would not, you know, let's say that you're like, you know, I like plan B, but I don't, I think twenty thousand is ridiculous. Then you could say, you know, I think that maybe, I don't know, I'm just going to make up a number twelve thousand is is more, you know, palatable. Then I would say, okay, and then I'd put that in the budget instead. And not that I would be doing it right now because I'm working on the fiscal budget for next year.
I'd say I'm looking at if if you can get any of this done, since outreach was identified as our biggest problem. That I'd go for the twenty and have it there in case you can get to it. You know, you don't always have to spend it all if we don't get that get that far. That's one way to look at it. And that just puts a cap on it of twenty K.
I agree. I think it's better to allocate for it and use it if needed and not use it if not needed.
Right. So I'll move I'll move to to budget twenty K for it.
A second.
You know. And and you want to make it a faster vote, just say, does anybody object?
Okay, does anybody object to the approval of twenty thousand for outreach? Hearing no one, then this passes unanimously.
Right. Because I think we need to get on to the next item, which is even much bigger than this one. In some ways, what do you say, Kevin? Yeah.
Move on to then.
All right. Well, thank you for the guidance. I will put that into the budget so we can take a look at it next month. My plan is to put all energy into the grant though. This next resolution is one of the requirements for getting the grant. What the resolution does is it it basically says that the board is would like to apply for this and is delegating authority to one person, me, to negotiate, sign and submit all grant documents on behalf of the board. This is mostly just, well, it's a formal document, obviously, but it also makes it so that the authority is, my authority would be real that I can sign on the app of the board. Otherwise, we'd have to do a board meeting every time I wanted to do a grant document, which is would be terrible. So I I definitely recommend passing this.
I'm motion for it.
Also, can I I mean, I I've looked at the documents you have to submit and you're right, you can't wait for us to have meetings. You you just have to push them through. The fact that this money didn't disappear is is amazing. So if we can get it to pay for as much of the repairs as we can, I know it'll cover the deck. We'll see how much of the bathrooms it'll cover, you know, beyond that, I'm not so sure because I'm the only one who was around when we 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 had a we had a neighbor who did at no cost rebuilding the bathrooms initially and and tiling them. And that was me. That was just the really the shower area, the back part, not the front part. The front part didn't need anything, you know, so. And if if my, we had a grant of fifty thousand about, if I remember right. And I think that back then, twenty years ago, just to do the tiling and and shower things today would be well over two hundred thousand dollars. So don't be surprised, you might, we might have to cut back on what we can do just to just maintenance, which is fine if it helps pay for, you know, fixing, you know, replacing all the shower heads, the shower controls and whatever, as far as it'll go, fine. But I don't think it'll rebuild the bathrooms, you know. And anytime you only have to pay twenty percent and get the other eighty percent paid for. And and the money is guaranteed to be there so long as you use it for maintenance, you know, from the way I've been reading the applications, you know. You can't complain about that. Proposition sixty eight is where all this money came from.
Well, since we have a motion and a second on the floor, does anyone object to passing item four C? Hearing no objections, then it passes unanimously. Awesome. All right, we'll move on to five A, General Manager's Report. Kevin, you have the
Yes, I think we touched on most of the important stuff already. Let's see here.
Heater.
Okay, yes, just a reminder, get your Form seven hundreds in. If you haven't already, if you need help, I can help you to reset your password. And oh, this one's kind of a big item, our pool heater. It was rebuilt in twenty fifteen. And it's kind of starting to go now and it's getting harder to rebuild. Some of the parts are not really readily available anymore or they don't quite fit. The new models don't quite fit the old model. So there's just issues that can't be addressed going forward. So we're we're kind of on a time crunch at this point. We don't really know when it's going to go out. So the recommendation is that we replace it sometime this year. Now that being said, if we can make it to summer, which we probably can, then we'll be fine, even if it does break. So oh, I hear your mics off.
He, oh, is it malfunctioning really bad? Can we push the pool heater out to next year?
Oh, it's it's not malfunctioning yet. If if it does, though, it's gone. It's done.
Okay.
It's just that it's not, it's not repairable anymore. So it's not even serviceable anymore. So it still works. It's still pumping in heat, but if and when something goes wrong, there's a good chance we cannot fix it.
And we hope for a really hot, hot, hot summer?
Yes. Well, in the summer, it's totally fine in the summer. So in the summer, without a heater, it can actually get up to eighty nine degrees. So it's pretty good. So as long as it sometimes if it's cold, then it can get that. But but usually in the summer, it's fine. So we got seven years out of that refurbishment, which is is fantastic. It was a really good return. Now it's time to change it up. This is going to be a big expense, probably in the order of thirty to fifty thousand, somewhere in that range. We have a couple options that we're looking into. One is to have a big heater put in as well. Part of the issue with the big heaters is that there's not many pools that need the big heaters. And so when things break, it's a specialty part which you have to, you know, ship and spend time getting. So another option that we're looking at is to get two smaller heaters. And that's nice because there's a lot of small pools that use small heaters. And so the parts are easier to get. But it's not free. Overall, now you have a higher overall cost because you're maintaining two heaters. But if one breaks, you're not dead in the water. You can still heat your pool. So there's different options. We're looking at the costs for each and then I'll have a better idea of what that looks like likely next month. We will see what happens there. We also need to drain the pool because the TDA is getting a little bit high. Basically, it's just little, little salty, not bad, but just salty. If we drain the pool, we'll have to either drain it or use a filtration truck. Which may cost about two thousand dollars or we could just drain the pool, but then that wastes a hundred thousand gallons. So and we have to drill holes in the bottom of the pool to release hydrostatic pressure. Anyway, we're looking into it.
That idea of the truck sounds really good to me if we can do it because it saves a hundred thousand gallons. I didn't even know that was a possibility, but
Yeah, Jay found out. Oh, sorry.
Don't forget the doubt we're in.
Yes. So Jay's looking into the filtration truck. They're going to be coming out and they'll talk to us a lot more about that process, what it involves, how low they can take the TDS. And I think that, like I said, I think he said that cost should be around two thousand. So which is double what we expect if we drain and fill. So draining and filling is cheaper, but then we're wasting a ton of water and we have to drill holes in the bottom of the pool. It's anyway.
I remember the water cost is going to be more than that, believe me.
Likely, yeah.
Yeah. We can hang on to the the gallonage because we're in a drought, among other things. If that's much better, I don't care if the difference is only a couple thousand dollars, you know, so.
Definitely.
Play the nonprofit card and get a discount that we're a nonprofit, we're a small community.
That's with the nonprofit.
Okay, sorry.
We already played that card. So but but definitely if we can, we'll try to conserve that 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 water. But we need to look into the process more and just make sure that we're that it's going to solve what we think it's going to solve.
Because I keep expecting, you know, that they're going to say, you know, we got to shut down pools because of the water, the drought, you know. I I tried to ask that at the Special District Association meeting of the Water District. And I don't get an answer. They can't give me an answer is that when we're all going to be dying of thirst, we can't get water out of the tap. You know, it's it's getting desperate. So anything we can do to save water and and for some reason, we used half as much heat. And what half as much water this year as last year at the same time. I don't understand why, then we must have a leak.
We we had it, we had a leak and we fixed it. Last, anyway, we fixed it a while ago, but it was in our irrigation. It took us a while to find it. It was kind of deep. But yeah, I I think we probably will be one of the last people to be shut down only because the having a public pool makes it so that people don't build by or fill their own pools because there's a public pool available. So it actually ends up saving quite a lot of water, having a public pool available. So I think they'll keep us open a little longer.
Right. That's that's the hope.
That's the hope. That's the That's the hope. That's the hope. All right, next item is staffing shortages. I talked a little bit about that before. Last year, we were at two-thirds capacity for many of our programs. This year, so far anyway, we've had a pretty tough time of recruiting. I'm not really sure of the reasons why. But. I think the things we're looking at right now is increasing the referral bonus. If we get really desperate, we'll need to increase the base wages, or maybe even go into paid advertisement to get more staffing. But time will tell what we need to do. As for new and amended policies, the updated bylaws have been prepared and have undergone an initial review. I pushed it off just because this meeting was going to be a little bit long anyway. So this one will be next meeting along with the budget, so that we can look at the new bylaws. The new bylaws are very different from the old bylaws, but you'll see that soon. And the outreach plan we've already covered. Any question? Yeah.
Quick one. The, I noticed the lawyer didn't sign off on the motion we made for the. Grant thing, but wording looked pretty good to me. I'm hoping, you know. That if, if he makes, needs to make any minor legal change to the wording, I wanted to make sure the motion says fine.
No, no, he, he's already, he's already looked at it. He actually was on vacation when he sent it back to me, so I didn't want to bother him again.
Okay.
So he's, he's already checked it over and, and given it his approval, but yeah, I, I, I felt bad because he. He's already out of office on vacation and he's still sending it to me. Anyway, I'm glad you did. But, yeah, I'll, I'll get that, that signature from him, and then I'll pass it on to our chair. Any questions?
Do we have to move to adjourn?
I, I believe so, yes. But I'll just go ahead and move to adjourn if there's a second.
A second.
Awesome. Anyone opposed? I hope not. Okay, no opposition, but we adjourn at seven forty-eight.